The PA no clothes it out.
Yes, I'm more concerned about that.
Thank you and welcome to the Town of Dudley Planning Board meeting for May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. Present this evening, we have Richard Clark, Vice Chairman, Steve White Roba, Clerk of the Board, Thomas Chinaki, Member, Daniel Edmiston, Member, William Scanlon is our Town Planner and myself, Guy Horn, Chairman. First item on our agenda for this evening is continuation of a public hearing on the redevelopment of the Stevens Mill.
Good evening, Matt Murva from Bowler here on behalf of the applicant. I believe Stephen Madouse is on the phone, is that right Bill?
Yes, Stephen, you wanna say hi?
Stephen?
Yes, W R.
Okay.
I'm sorry I can't join you, but I appreciate this is probably a bit difficult today. I'm probably most of them listening, but I'm available as soon as.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Max on the volume, Bill?
I am now.
Great, so thanks for having us in tonight. When we were last here, two weeks ago, we had resubmitted plans to the board which were in the process of being peer reviewed by Graves Engineering. We did receive that peer review letter on May fifth and we've responded to Mr. Walsh's comments in writing and in revised plans that were submitted back to the board yesterday. We tried to turn them around as quickly as possible to try to get things buttoned up. I understand that that doesn't leave much time for Graves to re-review the plans and make sure that everything is accommodated. But we're confident that if there are any outstanding issues, we can certainly work them out either administratively after a vote tonight. We are seeking approval, hoping for a vote this evening based on our response to those comments. There really was nothing in there that we couldn't accommodate. Most of the changes requested have already been made to the plans. There are only a few outstanding items that we'll be buttoning up over the next couple of weeks. And I can run through those briefly with you. I'm not sure if you've all seen the comment letter from Graves Engineering yet.
Yeah, there was thirty items on that list.
Sure thing, that's right. And a lot of them were labeling and making sure the context plan showed the right area and all of those minor things have been accommodated in the updated plan set that you have. The four things that are not yet in there are revised photometric plan, which is being completed by the architect currently as part of their ongoing design process. So we're glad to submit that as soon as that's ready. The dumpster enclosure, we will provide a dumpster enclosure for the trash. That was one of the items on here and we'll work with the planner to ensure that that material for that screening is appropriate. We just want the architecture to be a little further along so that whatever we're proposing kind of matches with some of the finishes that they're using, that they'll be developing further as they get into more detailed design. There was a question on providing detailed pipe sizing and the drainage report. That is part of more detailed design that we will be doing and we'll be working through those details and providing them to Graves moving forward. But the roof leaders, for example, which was a question last time, the architecture isn't quite far enough along for us to know exactly where all the downspouts are gonna be coming down out of the building. So we've sized the drainage systems appropriately to handle all of the runoff from the roof. But we just need to finalize the exact locations where those downspouts will return to grade and have laterals out to the drain lines. So that will be forthcoming as well. And then there was a question on providing, the Graves report asked that we consider providing additional landscape at the Mill Street entrance. We are amenable to that, we just wanna work that out with the abutter because that is their property to make sure that any landscaping done is consistent with any proposed improvements and how they want the site entry to look as well. So we're glad to make all of those four items, conditions of approval if that's possible. But that's really our hope here tonight. I'm glad to answer any questions you may have on the updated plans or any lingering issues that you see, but I think we've buttoned it up pretty well and hoping we can, we can seek your vote.
Mr. Chairman, would you update us with regards to the Mill Street entrance? It seems that this has been going then under discussion for some length now.
I think Mr. Madouse.
Is there a resolution here finally?
Yep, Stephen Madouse, I think, can speak to that from the phone there.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. You have second report that the parties have agreed to the easement agreement. And so, and we had the easement plan prepared to best define the easement. So we are, we don't have the signed document because the Tri Valley Board wasn't meeting prior to this meeting, but we have agreed to terms and everything is good to go. So we are confident we can build what showed on that plan.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
I can't, I was wondering, comment number one, why couldn't the affordable housing be identified on the plan now?
I could offer, if I may. Rental units, they tend to move around, if you will, as tendencies open up and you don't keep them static. They, as a new unit becomes available, if you're in need of an affordable unit, that one might become affordable. So for apartments, I think there are, and D H C B guidelines, I think support this, allow for, as long as you maintain the number, and they're required to be the same appearance as the market rate units, but you can move the affordable units around as tendencies become available or people, you know, become no longer qualified and have to get a new affordable unit. So it gives you that flexibility. I think it's very difficult to maintain them as it's designated units.
Okay.
So as far as stormwater is concerned, the existing building has roof drains or has downspouts?
They will be downspouts, I believe.
What does an existing building have, do you know?
Not a hundred percent sure, but that's, again, the architectural plans just need to sync up as they get developed further. There may be some roof scuppers, there may be some downspouts, but the, the surface sheet of the roof area has all been accommodated within the stormwater management system. So we just need to determine the exact conveyances of getting that stormwater down to the ground level.
But if those roofs are drained through roof drains and if the existing underslab structure is used, that structure could be a hundred years old and they'd be relying on a hundred year old pipes to bring the stormwater to a catch basin or retention?
Well, that'll be, that'll be part of all of our building permit plans as we come back in for building permits, so everyone will get another look at how that all works.
Problem is, is that whenever we have concerns and we vote, doesn't necessarily mean those concerns will be passed on to or be addressed by the Building Department.
Well, if I.
Everybody makes a mistake, so things could sit through the cracks.
Sure, sure.
It's just the same with the, with the, you don't have a geology report. So I have a hard time understanding how you can calculate percolation for the storm tech systems if you don't have a geotechnical.
So there's two different kinds of geology report. There's the, the test pits for the stormwater analysis, which we do have. I think what you might be referring to.
Do those deal with the percolation of the existing soil?
Yes, yes, but we don't have the, the full geotech of the entire, you know, for new foundations and those kinds of things for the architectural design at this point.
Do you know if we have that report?
Well, if it's in the stormwater report, we would have the, I haven't seen anything specific to that.
And the detail for the storm tech drains only show the storm tech units being like thirty inches with just like six inches of crushed stone on either side of it. Based on the groundwater, that doesn't seem like it's gonna afford much actual percolation. It's gonna fill up pretty quick depending on the amount of the storm, but it's all get dumped into the river. Shouldn't those be a little bit deeper or what's the reason that they're only thirty inches as opposed to deeper?
Well, the, the design that we've provided has been peer reviewed by Graves. So I don't think they had an issue with the size and that was the size that we felt was appropriate for the amount of conveyance needed.
I have a little trouble with the answer. Seems like if Graves didn't have a concern, that you would also not have a concern. It just, you've reviewed or your team has put together the whole stormwater report, right?
Yes.
Alright. I also just wanted to touch base on something we talked about quite some time ago, the traffic, traffic study. And then the police chief's report kind of touched upon the intersection. Which one is it, down by Oxford Road?
Was it High Street?
Was it the High?
High Street and the Oxford.
Yep, exactly, Pine and High. He also mentioned the fact that something most likely will have to be done at some point in time. I know this project isn't really addressed at, isn't addressed. I think one of the comments made early on in the process were, was that if that was something that had to be addressed, it would be up to Town of Dudley to look for some sort of funding or federal program or state program to go through. Anybody else share concerns about that?
I know.
Or is that?
They, when they put in that Mill Street access, they revised the traffic study to account for the different directions in which vehicles become.
Well, anything, that means more traffic will be going down towards Pine, not less.
The, you know, they did modeling of future conditions with the project open and they looked at that particular intersection and did not see a significant increase in traffic that would warrant any kind of additional traffic control. So, so that's what their, their traffic engineer determined from his analysis.
Mr. Chairman, obviously there will be impact in terms of additional traffic. Pine Street area, we'll certainly see some of that. Probably gonna be significant increase on something like Bigelow Road in Webster, coming off of three ninety-five. That fortunately is across the town line and I don't think that's in our purview. That whole infrastructure issue is one that the town is going to have to face in the future. Whether this project.
Just to have it quote-unquote on the record that traffic won't be impacted there at all is just ludicrous. I mean, anybody with a little bit of common sense is gonna know there's gonna be some impact.
Oh, I would agree.
Yeah, I mean, just, I understand that the traffic report, they have their things they go by and the counts and their numbers and everything else, but you can go out there now and it's a pain in the butt.
Oh, yeah, it is.
So.
I think it's a growing pain that we're gonna have to deal with. But I agree with your point, Dan, that to have a traffic report, a traffic study that actually implies that it's not going to affect traffic over there.
So as far as.
I suspect we're all in agreement on that traffic will increase.
So as far as conditions of approval are concerned, we need to have something in there about the Mill Street easement. Without the Mill Street easement.
Absolutely.
I think we need that signed and then.
Correct.
Actually, you know, the T's crossed and the I's dotted, that's been a discussion for some time.
I'd also like to have some kind of a blurb in there about the stormwater. If they're gonna use roof drains and if it's gonna use the existing, that there should be cammering of the lines to make sure everything's clean and not broken and correct and it could be reused.
So, Mr. Chairman, at this point, I guess I want to just ask the question, are we, are we basically talking about the possibility of going forward with the vote tonight, but just adding these contingencies?
It's, it's the board's pleasure, entertain whatever you wanna do.
So, I guess. You know, I would, once you make a decision, would write that up and would include all the conditions. So you can make, you know, tell me what you want in there now and I'll write it up. But there's some other things too that were considered during the project that I would go back and include those as well.
We almost need to go back over the past four months and.
Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate to ask the public if there were any comments from the public at this point? I think if the board is finished with his questions.
Is everybody all set?
Guy, the Fire Department Minister, if you like, they could.
We're gonna have to come back to it.
Right, but you're all set for, for right now for questions, you're gonna open up to the public?
I guess so.
All set?
Yeah, I'd like to see a condition of orders and how many parking spots they have, how much is gonna be required in the end, because stuff changes during construction. Same thing with the commercialized use. We don't have commercialized use if they wanna do a condition of orders. Once a commercialized use is given, they're gonna have to give us more parking to meet that commercialized use. Because you only get ten percent now.
So there is an allowance made for the undetermined commercial space at this point. They have an area, I think, of twenty or fifty, like six thousand square feet, something like that. And based upon the parking ratio and the zoning law, bylaw requires twenty-three spaces. So they've allocated that number of spaces for that particular use. But it would also depend upon the final use that they get there, that they're able to acquire there. So they may need to come back for, you know, a modification of the plan or provision of additional parking if that would be necessary.
One of the things we all, we want to get the public speaking first.
Well, the one thing I was gonna say is that, I mean, we got this, we got this letter from our consultant town engineer with thirty issues. I know you've, you've come back with a response to all thirty, but a lot of them are still saying, let's make this, let's make this part of our conditions of approval. I don't know, myself, I would probably feel a little bit more comfortable if the, if the town engineer had a chance to go through and look at all your addresses.
So of the thirty that you mentioned, I think I highlighted the four that we did not address in the plan.
Yet.
So the, the plans have been updated to accommodate, for rough numbers, twenty-six of the thirty comments. And the four I highlighted, you know, we're glad to make conditions of approval if, if that works for you. But it, it's not that we have not done any of what's on the list. We, we put together a new plan set that accommodates almost everything that's, that's in the Graves letter.
What comment numbers did you highlight?
I highlighted number four, the photometric plan. Number five, the exact materials of the dumpster enclosure. We do agree that we will provide one, we just wanna work with, with the town planner on the exact materials. Number nine was the, the pipe sizing. That we would be providing that as part of the construction document preparation and, and provide that at that time as well. And then number eighteen on the landscaping at the new, the new entrance on Mill Street, which is on property that we don't control, so we need to work those details out with the landowner.
Okay.
I think those are the only.
Okay, essentially, so there are two issues with regards to the Mill Street entrance. There's the Mill Street entrance itself in terms of the final agreement and whatever subsequently follows thereafter as far as landscaping is concerned, as you mentioned here.
Right.
So that's maybe get you four and a half.
So if we could just get, Bill, if you could take some of these notes down so that we'll have in sort of conditions of approval, so what Mr. Clark just said, we wanna see the approved easement plan, easement agreement or whatever you're gonna get with the abutters.
Absolutely.
You mentioned the water.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to that real quick. It was, I brought up stormwater and it was mentioned, the answer was that Graves didn't show any concerns about it. I'd direct your attention to point number, or item number nine and item number thirteen. And nine, he's talking about the size of the piping for the drainage system. Now thirteen, he's talking about groundwater and the bottom elevations of the, of the storm techs. Both of those are related to drain water or to stormwater.
Right, and we did agree in the letter that we would conduct additional test pits.
Right, but the comment was made that Graves didn't show any concerns and there are two concerns right there.
That was, those were two of yours?
Yeah, nine and thirteen.
Yours was traffic?
Uh, no.
I had traffic too.
You had traffic too, okay.
In regards to traffic, we do have a long list of mitigation measures that are part, that is part of this project, so.
But that's all towards south side, not the other side, the north side?
Related to the project, you know, there's sidewalks and crosswalks and speed signs, so quite a few and widening of adlock. So I'm going, I've asked for a commitment from the developer for the mitigation that they've agreed to. So that will become part of the decision to add, attach that as an exhibit to the condition, to the decision.
Okay, and then the two topics that Mr. Chinaki brought up, which was the parking spaces and if there was changes due to the commercial space.
Okay.
Just to clarify though, that as of now, we, we do show two extra spaces beyond what's required per the straight zoning calculation for the, the use we expect at this point. But understood, if, if we do change that use, we need to come back and discuss that relative to parking count.
Alright, so if everybody's all set, we'll open up for the public.
I just wanted to get clarification on what Mr. Scanlon just said as far as amicable to changes that may need to be done. Would that include the possibility of a, if, if it ends up being necessary, a traffic light at the intersection of Pine Street and Oxford Ave? Because that is something that I think the chief, didn't the chief mention something like, didn't that come up?
Correct, he did bring that up as an issue of concern.
So there's a.
That's the big expense I'm thinking of.
So there is a condition or a proposed mitigation that they will do a, a post occupancy follow-up traffic analysis.
When, once, once they get to eighty percent occupancy or something?
I think it was fifty percent.
Fifty percent, okay.
So then they would, you know, take traffic, traffic counts and identify changes in the various intersections and then we'd have a sense of what the impact of that particular project was. So to your point, no, there's no, anything called out specific to that intersection in the future. But if something is, you know, possible based upon this additional analysis, then we could negotiate for that.
But if they didn't find anything now, in a way they're gonna come back, post occupancy, say all of a sudden.
Well, we're talking about a traffic study, I haven't looked at it more recently. But if memory serves me, I think one of the big sticking points we had when the traffic study first came out was the fact that they didn't even talk about that intersection. They didn't even talk about the traffic count over there. So of course you're not gonna see it, you got nothing to compare it to because you didn't, your traffic engineer didn't bother even looking at what traffic was there currently. Just saying.
You know, it's hard for us to comment intelligently on the traffic study, but it'd be nice if we could get additional information if that's what you're looking for.
Do we want to comment from the public over there? Alright, if anyone from the public would like to make some comments on this project, they can come up to the table.
Chief, Chief, hey Dean?
Yes.
Did you have a chance to look at that turning movement plan?
I did. Did you want me to speak on it?
Yes.
So I, I planned it today about it and there's plenty of room. All the trucks, including the ladder truck, which is our largest vehicle, has access to all sides of the building. The width of the, what we, whether you wanna call it a driveway or a throughway around the building where those arrows are showing on the plan is twenty-four feet. That's more than enough for any fire apparatus to fit in there with ease.
Do we have a plan that we can call up on the screen?
Yes. Would the fire, the turning movement?
Just, no, just the, the site plan, just this site layout.
Site plan, the site plan, sure.
Yeah, the, the vehicle plan was, was pretty clear, but I don't recall the locations of all the fire hydrants and I'm assuming that they're at the edge of the parking lot where cars are parked between where the truck would be and the, and the fire hydrant would be.
So who's the overall site plan? If you have a question for me.
Just location of fire hydrants, do we know offhand where they happen to be?
Yeah, they would be on the utility plan.
With utility, what, what number is that?
So Chief, if any of the fire hydrants are at the edge of the parking lot, you've got cars between the truck and the hydrant, any concerns?
Well, they can't, you can't park in front of a hydrant by law, so. But I had stated earlier that as far as water supply, that's probably the best district for pressure and gallons per minute we have in town, so.
Which is all good to hear.
And if you, if you remember, we just, they just, the water department just redid those mains on Pine Street. So again, they're probably the best ones we have in town right now.
Should help the sprinkler system as well?
Yeah, the sprinkler system can only be pumped to a max of one fifty anyway, even if we supplement it. That's, but yeah, it'd provide plenty for the sprinkler system.
So you think they'll need a fire pump?
What's that?
Do you think they'll need a fire pump?
No, I just, part of the regular engineering that goes with a normal sprinkler system, nothing in addition to that.
Yeah, I can point out the plan that I believe the hydrant is, is here.
That's the only fire hydrant, fire hydrant on the building?
Yeah, more than that. Yep, there's another one, right here.
Okay, between two buildings that might be burning?
Those are the two I can see on here right now. I'm glad to provide a plan that highlights those locations if you'd like, but.
Yeah, it'll be great.
I believe this was coordinated with the fire chief, where they wanted to see those located. And those are the two I'm finding on the plan right now.
Are they existing or are they proposed?
One comes off of the existing fire service location in the upper corner, but I think it's a new hydrant. And the one in here, I believe, is a new hydrant as well.
There's actually three hydrants. There's one on Adlock Place as well. Plus we have the river, we can pump directly out of the river. There's plenty of water there.
Okay. Now, if you don't have any concerns about location and quantity, then I'm obviously fine with it.
There's one at Adlock Place and two on Mill Street, right in the, right around it. It's like, there's like a semi-circle right around the mill.
Okay.
And then there's, there's two more, there's one down by Dip and Donuts and there's one further down on Adlock Place. I mean, you're still drawing off the same system, but I mean, there's plenty of water there between that and being able to draft directly out of the river, which is right behind.
I didn't think about the river, I was thinking about the backside of the building, so plant, plant east, and I was thinking about, it's a long facade there, but like you said, you've got the river, I didn't think about that, so. If you're good, I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would move that we approve the site plan. Pending resolution of conditions as noted, at least four and a half, if you will. Uh, I think the applicant has shown a willingness to work with us going forward, multiple meetings obviously, uh, over an extended period of time. I for one confess to being anxious to move this forward.
Can we have that amended so that we can go back through past meetings and make sure that comments that got, were made then will be brought forward if necessary? Some of them could have been addressed already, but just in case, I'd hate to grab some, sip the cracks.
Yeah, that's part of that idea, I would agree with Dan's proposal there, because.
Not quite sure how that amendment would read, but I certainly would agree to that.
We also need to include this as a special permit with site plan approval. But we had agreed at the last meeting it would be by majority vote rather than a super majority vote, but it is a special permit.
So we could, we could make the vote with the conditions tonight, but we wouldn't actually sign off until we have all the conditions in writing and everybody's in agreement that that's what it's gonna be, that's what it's gonna be.
If I can get you a draft for the next meeting.
For the next meeting.
Get it to you hopefully a couple of days ahead of time, so that you can think about it.
Okay.
I'm agreeable for that if the rest of the board members.
Is that a second, Mr. Chairman?
I, I don't think there was a motion, but.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. What, opposed?
One opposed.
No, one abstention.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate.
Yeah, I'd like to thank your team for working with us and, uh, go through the process with us, appreciate it, you guys were good to work with.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate your time and looking forward to getting this built.
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Good night.
Have a good evening.
Okay, next item on the agenda, a public hearing. This is the legal notice right here, um, Phil?
Yes. That was on your inside flat.
Yep. Okay, Dudley Planning Board, Public Hearing Legal Notice. In accordance with provisions of Section five point zero four, Site Plan Review, under Dudley's own bylaw, the Dudley Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, at seven thirty P M. in the Dudley Municipal Complex, Room three twenty-one A. DMC Veterans Memorial Hall, seventy-one West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. oh one five seven one. On the application of Dudley Landfill LLC, one hundred eleven Spine Street, Suite four, four hundred and ten, Framingham, Massachusetts. For a major site plan review, the project entails construction of approximately one thousand eight hundred and thirty kilowatt DC ground-mounted solar voltaic array and a one thousand two hundred and fifty kilo, kilovolt AC battery energy storage system at the Dudley Landfill. The site plan was prepared by Weston and Sampson Engineering, Inc., fifty-five Walkers Brook Drive, Suite one hundred, Reading, Mass. oh one eight seven, dated March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. The facility is cited on map one hundred twenty-two, lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and map two hundred thirty-five, lot eighty. The property is in the Town Refuge Disposal Zone District, where a large-scale ground-mounted solar voltaic systems are allowed by right with site plan review. Copies of the plan and application are on file at the Planning Board Office and the Town Clerk's Office, both of which are located at the Dudley Municipal Complex, seventy-one West Main Street, Dudley, Mass. oh one five seven one. It may be inspected during regular working hours. The Planning Board will receive public input. At the public hearing, any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. If you wish to comment but are unable to attend, please submit written comments to the Planning Board Office before four thirty P M. on May tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Guy Horn Chairman, Dudley Planning Board, this was advertised on April twenty-second and again on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board. I'm Tom Reedy, I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst here on behalf of Dudley Landfill Solar. Uh, with me this evening, to my right, Rob Bukowski, uh, engineer with Weston and Sampson, to my left, Steve McDonough and Sam Kane with Dudley Landfill Solar, Immeresco. I'll just give a, a really brief overview of, of where we've been, where we're going, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Rob to walk you through the site plan. Um, so we're obviously talking about the Town Landfill, seven Indian Road. We've been working with the town since about two thousand and eighteen, um, we've been working through due diligence, we've got our interconnection services agreement with the utility company. Uh, we've got power purchases, purchase agreements with the town and the school district. Uh, we need this site plan review approval as, as part of the approval package. We're gonna go through the Conservation Commission and get what's called a, a determination of applicability, um, because of the, the wetlands proximate to the site. And then finally, we're gonna need DEP approval for the closure of the landfill. So permitting path, this is one of the stops, there is still that DEP stop after, and so, not to get ahead of ourselves, but if you do approve it, we would be fine with a condition that the, the, uh, that we do in fact get that DEP, uh, closure approval before we get the building permit for this project. And so, with that, so I won't steal anyone's thunder, Rob, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Tom. Good evening, everyone. Uh, so Rob Bukowski with Weston and Sampson, I've been working with Immeresco for ten years or so, um, on, mostly focusing on, um, solar development on closed, closed landfills. So we've done a lot of these, um, including other ones within the central region of DEP, which, which Dudley falls into. So the proposed, um, plan, as you can see up here, there's, there's two lobes of the landfill, um, and sort of a valley in the middle, so mainly the array is focused on those lobes with some also being down in the, the flatter areas in the middle. It's about one point eight megawatts DC, which is about one point two AC, and there's also an associated battery energy storage system with this. The landfill parcel is about twenty-four acres and we're developing about eleven acres of it. I know you previously mentioned, Mr. Chair, it's in the, the Town Refuge Disposal District. Uh, there'd be about forty-five hundred modules, and the way this works is that all the modules are, are placed on racking and the racks are supported by concrete ballasted foundation blocks. The reason for that is that we can't drive posts or ground screws or anything that you might see at some other solar arrays because of the landfill cap. So everything has to be constructed above grade, and that's, um, something that DEP looks very closely at, you know, mainly their review is focused on ensuring that whatever's being proposed isn't gonna compromise the integrity of the cap. So from the array areas, um, the electrical wiring is all above ground, it's placed on either cable trays or in conduits on blocks. It'll be run down to the bottom, right where the transfer station, near where the gate is, that goes from the transfer station back into the landfill. And the proposed transformer, inverter and battery equipment is gonna be placed within that area. So everything will be run above ground to there, from there it'll go overhead, there'll be some new poles placed, and then it'll tie into National Grid's infrastructure. Stormwater management, what we do is, um, we did an analysis, we take a conservative approach, because essentially the, the cap is basically impervious, right? Part of it has clay, part of it has an impervious liner. What we do is take a conservative approach and we look at these blocks as if they're added impervious, and then we just analyze the existing stormwater infrastructure. At this site, some of the, the northern slope of the northern lobe will, will continue to flow in the same direction, same with the southern slope of the southern lobe. The other two lobes that kind of flow into the valley in the middle, there's a detention basin in there, so part of our analysis was to just make sure that the post-construction runoff rate doesn't increase over the pre-construction rate, and, and that was, um, demonstrated through that analysis. Tom mentioned that DEP is reviewing, it's a post-closure use permit application that we submitted to them. We are requesting three waivers, which I can run through, um, two of them are related to setback, so the front yard setback, which is the, the one along, right, uh, going along the transfer station. Um, requesting a variance from, our waiver from a hundred feet down to fifty feet. Um, and then a side yard, still right up next to the transfer station, uh, from fifty feet down to twenty feet. Um, one other request is the fence site, the bylaw calls for a six-foot fence. We're requesting a waiver to seven feet, which is required by the Nat, National Electric Code, um, just for the, for the solar array. Uh, we did also receive some comments from Graves, uh, review comments that, uh, we were able to look through, and, and we don't see anything in here that is anything that we can't meet or, um, or address easily, so. Um, again, if, if it does get to that point, you know, as Tom mentioned, the condition, if, um, if it gets to that point, we'd be fine with a condition that said, you know, we needed to meet all of Graves' engineers' comments to their satisfaction.
What's the, what's the purpose of the batteries on site?
Um, it's a, it's, it's part of the incentive program, and Steve, you can jump in if you want, but, um, the idea is that during some of these peak hours, when the, the sun's out and the solar's generating a lot, it can, it can charge up the battery system, and then, you know, in other times of like peak demand, say in August day where everybody has their air conditioning on, the batteries can discharge, so it takes a little bit of the, you know, the work off of, of the rest of the grid and the generating facilities.
Yeah, then under the Mass Smart Program, anything over the five hundred KW has to have battery storage under the Mass Smart Program, number two, yeah.
So, um, these batteries that are on site, what are they, what are they housed in?
They're housed in typically a container system, you know, similar to like a shipping container. So they'll be fully enclosed.
And what kind of batteries are we talking about, lithium batteries?
These are lithium, lithium ion batteries, correct.
And is there any provisions in this housing that you're gonna set up that if there was a leak or something with one of these batteries, that it wouldn't just go directly onto the ground, or?
Um, I've never heard of any situation like that, but they do have fire suppression systems, that's typically the biggest concern, you know, of these battery systems. But, uh, you know, typically there is a, there is a fire suppression system for these battery containers, and they're fully enclosed, so I don't think there's any way they can leak out of those containers.
And if this caught on fire, the suppression system's supposed to retain it and?
Correct, yeah, it's fully enclosed and with the suppression system inside.
And the enclosure's metal?
Correct, yep.
And the waivers that you were asking for, the setbacks were all from already town-owned property?
Correct. Yeah, there's really no, uh, I don't, I don't think there's any place around that you could really see this from other than the transfer station.
If the site has twenty-four acres and you're only developing eleven, why do you need a setback of fifty feet, fifty additional feet?
It's, it's really related to the slopes, I can, I can point it out to you here, I don't know if you'll be able to hear me. So some of the flatter areas of the site are really optimal for solar development, so we're really requesting it so that we can develop on some of these flatter areas here. You can see this is where we're requesting the fifty feet to get some of these flatter ones in here, and then this is another area up in here that's, that's flatter, that we're requesting the, the reduction to twenty feet.
So just to maximize the amount of solar panels in there, basically?
And, and to, yeah, to maximize the amount of flat area we're using for it too.
Maybe just add one thing, one of the things to remember is that nothing is bored into the ground, so where with a traditional solar array, not on a landfill, you might be able to be and would likely be able to be on steeper grades because you could secure it in the ground. Here, you don't have that luxury, you're ballasting everything, and so you need to be on that flatter ground because you're not able to get those bigger grades.
So for this project, you'll be doing no site work?
That, so the site work will be limited to, um, access road that comes in from the gate, but again, everything's above grade, so, um, the other site work will be related to putting gravel underneath each of these concrete blocks. So, you know, the gravel's brought in, it's brought out to each one of these pads, they place six inches, compact it, and then put the block on top. But there'll be no regrading of any of the landfill cap.
Did you mention a detention pond or something?
There's an existing detention pond, yeah, yep, so that won't be modified.
Did you have a moment? Uh, what's the lifespan for one of these? How long do they last?
Uh, the lease for the landfill is for twenty years with up to two five-year extensions, so up to thirty years essentially.
Thirty years, uh, the life of the batteries is something less than thirty years, I suspect?
Yeah, the capacity diminishes over time, but you can do augmentation as that capacity diminishes.
So you'll be replacing batteries at some point during the?
Uh, replacing cells, not the battery itself, but cells, correct.
There's no hazardous material stored on site in any way, shape?
No.
And the fence that you talked about earlier, um, the seven-foot fence, this would be all, uh, around the landfill, it wouldn't be going across the top of it or, or around the edges of it? It's gonna be all off of where the landfill co, cover is now?
Yeah, it's, it's at the toe of the slope, and again, it's just due to slope limitations, because the, the fence has to be ballasted as well. So, you know, we're, we're technically within the limits of the landfill, so you can't drive fence posts either, same reason why we can't drive foundation posts. So there'll be a, it'll be a smaller block, it's usually two or three foot square, and it has a, a hole that's a little bit bigger than the post, so that if the block's not completely level, you can plumb the post and then grow out around it.
Yeah, should help quite a bit with security too, because I know there's issues with ATVs and things like that get up there as well, so it should help a little bit with security as far as keeping, um, vehicles off the cap.
Now, on your DEP permit, when do you expect that to come through?
Um, I would say a couple more months anyway.
Technically, you don't know if DEP's allowing you to do this yet, is that what you're saying?
No, but we've, they, they've been involved all along, we had a pre-application meeting with them, um, we've been communicating with them, I, I don't see any issues with them not approving it. We've worked with them, like I mentioned before, probably done somewhere around twenty different landfills in Massachusetts with Immeresco.
You say twenty-eight?
Somewhere around twenty.
Around twenty?
Yeah.
Now, what happens if you accidentally rip this liner underneath? Plan put in action?
Yeah, it would need to be repaired, I mean, there's no, the, all the work done associated with the solar project, they're not excavating anything, so the grass will be cut as short as possible, and the gravel's brought in, and then the concrete block, so, you know, there'll be tracked equipment, everything has to be low ground pressure. Um, so there'll be tracked equipment that goes across to place the gravel, place the blocks, but nothing will go down to, to where the liner's located.
And there'll some, be someone on site to monitor all the construction activity as well, so, just to make sure that none of those, no damage occurs and it gets repaired quickly if it does.
What provisions are there for decommissioning?
Um, right now, we have in the lease agreement, a decommissioning bond of a hundred fifty thousand dollars for decommissioning.
What's the decommissioning process?
Um, essentially, all the equipment is removed, except everything, except things that are below grade that might disturb the soils trying to remove them, but in this case, on a capped landfill, there's really not a lot that is, there's really not anything that's below grade in this case. Um, so pretty much all the ballast blocks, all the modules, everything would be coming out of the landfill. I think the only thing we would leave is the, the access road.
You said a hundred fifty thousand?
Hundred fifty thousand, correct.
Hundred fifty thousand, that sounds pretty good in two thousand twenty-two, but we're talking thirty years out, I don't know what that number looks like then.
Yeah, yeah, that's, um, yeah, that's in the, the lease agreement.
Is that, uh, subject to, uh, change at any point? I mean, thirty years from now, I suspect anything that we're buying for, let's say, four thirty-five for a gallon of gas, maybe thirty-five dollars and forty cents by the time thirty years have expired, depending how things are going, and I don't know what a hundred and fifty bucks is, a hundred fifty thousand's gonna get us in thirty years, is my question.
Um, I mean, it's always subject to change, it would affect the lease payments for the town, um, so that's the one thing that would need to be discussed. But I think, Rob, you were just commenting on.
The provisions in the agreement for that to be revisited at some point?
I believe so, yes, yeah, I have the lease here, so I'll look, look through that as we're, uh, as we're discussing, but I think, Rob, you even got some feedback from DEP recently about typical, um.
Yeah, they, they use, they use a number, so, um, since this is a municipally-owned landfill, a financial assurance mechanism is not required through DEP, but if it was a privately-owned landfill, they would need a financial assurance mechanism for the same purpose for decommissioning. They use a number of ninety thousand per megawatt.
And let me buttress that by reading from the lease, so there's a, a provision in here which says, lessor shall have the right, so that's a town, but not obligation, to use a decommissioning bond to pay for the removal of the system and/or for any costs associated with repairing any damage caused to the lease premises for removal of the system and to make such repairs to the premises, to restore the lease premises to the condition in which they were required to be maintained under this lease, and this is the important piece. To the extent such decommissioning bond is inadequate to cover the costs of the foregoing, lessy, so tenant, shall pay the difference to the lessor forthwith upon demand therefore by lessor.
Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, the concrete block can theoretically be reclaimed, reused, crushed, whatever else. Is there any other use for the solar panels themselves whenever they're decommissioned?
In some cases, they have been reused. I know, I mean, they've only started to be decommissioned recently. And some have been resold for other projects. Obviously, they have a lot of lost capacity. So it's still something that's being developed, what the market will be for these solar panels.
So there are no recyclable capabilities or worth of value?
I don't know of any yet, but I think they're looking towards that. But I think a lot is, it's a resale market, potential recycling, and then they can all be disposed of at, you know, any kind of landfill, not hazardous waste.
I have heard of the components being recycled for some, I mean, the industry's relatively new, right? So some of the panels that may have been put up 10 or 12 or 15 years ago, if they're coming off. The frames, I believe, are aluminum, so that can be recycled if they take them apart. And then the glass can be recycled, so there certainly are components that can be recycled.
I would imagine that the market will help dictate, because it sounds like a great business opportunity for somebody to figure out what to do with all these panels when they come offline.
And just one more question out of curiosity, the cover for the landfill, how far below grade is that?
It's, I've got it right here. It's about 20 inches. 20 inches on the top, the two top lobes.
Currently, is the, I believe, like when I drive down there, I see this pipes coming out of the landfill now. So I'm guessing those are some kind of venting?
They are. They're methane gas.
That would all stay in place?
Correct. And we have to maintain a buffer of at least 10 feet from those. And you can see them on the, you know, there's one here, we've got the circle around it. The purpose of the buffer is to, you know, keep the electrical equipment away, but also to make sure that those vents can continue to be monitored and maintained.
Of the 20 or so landfills in Massachusetts that have been, that have had these solar arrays put on top of them, how old would you say is the oldest one?
Just so, just to clarify, there's been a lot more than 20. I was just saying, I, my involvement has been about 20. I mean, it ranges, you know, I'd say some go back to the 70s.
Really? Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Any other, do we have any questions from the public here this evening?
Does DEP change or surround if they don't like it, or is this what you design is what we get?
Oh, no. They'll weigh in, for sure. Yeah, they do a thorough technical review. And, yeah, they're, you know, I mean-
So what we're looking at, DEP can change it around, pretty much?
I wouldn't- The footprint will stay pretty much the same, just because some of the other areas of landfill aren't usable. So I don't think what you'll see is gonna be drastically different. But they do, when they do their review, they can ask questions and they can make requests, so.
And that's why I think we were suggesting that as a condition of approval, it's conditioned upon DEP approval, so that at least we have this first step. And then if they change it around, we come back to you for a modification based upon what DEP says.
But if anything, the size will likely get smaller, you know, versus, it definitely won't get bigger.
Any concerns that I might have would be related to the DEP review. Why not go to DEP first, then come to us?
So, we submitted around the same time. You know, we generally do them in parallel. Just to, you know, try to keep things moving rather than do them sequentially and having to wait for one review then the other.
I think DEP likes to see municipal approval, if they can, when they get to their review.
It's definitely not uncommon to have a condition, you know, based on DEP approval as well.
And have you already been to conservation, or do you still need to go to conservation?
Not yet. We've reached out to them, and we're in the process of preparing the application.
Where are the wetlands located?
So there's a couple areas. This area to the east is wet, and then this area to the south is wet. The only thing that we're doing within the 100-foot buffer zone is there'll be some of the fence posts. The solar array itself, that's, you know, more up on the top of the hill, is outside the buffer zone.
And again, you're not doing any digging, so-
Correct. So it's very minimal impact, yeah. We had reached out, and the conservation agent suggested that we submit an RDA.
All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this project? Do we want to close the public hearing? We didn't close the last public hearing. We voted, but we didn't close it. That's why we get paid the big bucks.
So, if you're looking for more information or any other issues addressed, we could continue. But if you're ready, think you have all the answers and comfortable with voting, we could do that tonight?
I mean, there's the three, from what I see, there's the three waivers, and the Graves report looks pretty complete. It's a page and a half.
What are the voting requirements?
Simple majority.
This is a major site plan review.
Excuse me?
Major site plan review.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the major site plan review for the Dudley landfill solar PV projects of an Indian Road with the waivers as requested.
Do you want to amend that to include the suggestion of DEP approval?
Subject to approval by DEP and conservation. You want to put that in there, too?
Nope.
Have we amended that properly? We want to vote the amendment first?
I think before we vote, we're supposed to close the public hearing.
Yep. Right.
I know, but let's not repeat the mistakes of the past. All right, so 8:57, we're gonna close the public hearing on the landfill solar project. And Mr. Clark, if you would be so kind to do it again?
I think we have to vote the amendment first, then, right, Bill?
No, you can make a motion.
New motion, if you will, for the text. I would ask that we vote to approve the major site plan as presented by Dudley landfill solar PV project for Seven Indian Road, contingent on approval by the DEP. Just cover the bases, Mr. Wachover.
And create the other waivers.
And with approval of the waivers as requested.
Conservation?
And a conservation law.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I'll have to abstain. I live right behind it.
So we have one abstention?
I'll oppose.
One opposed.
3-1-1.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep?
Is this because you recognize that the public hearing wasn't closed, would you mind just, on the record, recognizing that for the last vote and ratifying?
Yes.
Just to be on the safe side and-
I think we could do that.
Could you what?
We could recognize that the public hearing wasn't closed for the last vote and revote it.
Okay, sure.
Do you think we should revote it, or just?
Yeah, revote it. Make it official. Just in case.
Okay. So we're gonna go back on our agenda to the first item, which was the Stevens Mill. We didn't close that public hearing. We took the vote without closing it, so. We, I'm gonna say we, we were pretty much done with that at 7:30, because we started this at 7:30.
Yeah, 7:35, I think, yeah.
We'll close the, we'll close the public hearing on the Stevens Mill at 7:30. And we're gonna revote that vote that we had. Do you remember what your vote was?
The motion was to approve the site plan as presented for the Stevens Mill project. Condition, conditional on, with conditions.
So it was a site plan and a special permit?
Yeah.
So we had a motion to approve the site plan and a special permit for Stevens Mill with all the conditions that Bill's gonna work out for the next meeting, and then we'll go over those. That's what we'll be signing. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
You have to, because you seconded it last time.
I did?
Yep.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have one abstention. Okay.
Check out traffic.
So we made that legal. All right, so now we have an E and R plan, Thunberg on Cottage Road.
I mentioned that it should be here about 8 o'clock, so maybe the-
Wow.
I didn't expect it would be-
We're running on time.
Two public hearings before 8, so.
All right, so we-
Well, it's gotten into the board, right? It's never happened.
Moving right along.
Can we go to the next item, and then we'll just come back to them when he come up?
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is a pre-application meeting with Tom Raveen on a concept plan for a subdivision on Sawmill Road.
He's not here.
Tom is not here yet, either.
Well, that takes care of the next item.
Correct.
Oh, so he was the next, too. Okay, so let's go to approval of minutes from April 27th, our standard basis.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April 27th meeting as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, can we get a couple copies of that going?
Copies should be here.
I got one here I can sign.
You got one there, good.
Another copy, we can get them both through. Oh, yeah, there we go. Okay, let's see, all she got on the agenda, they seem.
I've got a black pen today.
Okay, there's been circulating around, we have a discussion, status report on finishing construction of and acceptance of uncompleted, unaccepted subdivision streets, including Pierpon Estates, Barquillo Estates, Master Road, Country View Estates, Tobin Farms, Lyons Estates, and Dudley Estates.
I don't have any updates.
The only thing I would mention is the Highway Commissioner was at the last selectmen's meeting and mentioned that the figures are, I guess, very close to being finalized as far as the betterment projects are concerned. I don't know that he specified one or the other. I think he may have mentioned Tobin's Farms. But I don't know that any of those numbers have been seen, other than by the folks that are working them actively. Selectmen have not seen them, hadn't seen them at that meeting.
Do you want me to respond, or? So, we did get the cost estimates in for the three proposed betterment programs from Graves Engineering, who we use, or the planning board uses, to estimate cost of road construction all the time. So Graves prepared a detailed schedule of work that needs to be completed. And based on unit costs and prevailing wages, calculated the cost of each of those items, and then added in, I think, a 20% contingency because of the uncertainty in materials and labor costs by the time we actually do this. So he then came up and had those reviewed by the Highway Superintendent, who, you know, had some other input into that process. But essentially, Graves came back with their costs. And Tobin Farm was, I think, $4.90, Misty Meadow was $2.80, and Partridge Hill was $1.05. So the largest owner cost is on Misty Meadow.
The fewer homes.
Fewer homes, and, you know, fairly large cost. The other two are in the $10,000 to $12,000 range, or something of that sort, per owner, which is still significant. So we're, we've invited the homeowner, a letter's going out tomorrow, I believe, to invite all the residents to a meeting next Tuesday in this room at 5 o'clock. Where we'll have town staff available to talk to the residents, answer their questions, and let them know that, you know, it's a town meeting vote that's required. If they're in favor of it, I think that would certainly make approval more likely. If they were opposed to it, you know, that, I don't know what, how town meeting would react to it at that point, but might not approve them if they thought it was opposition to it.
At this meeting, is there any, is there any room for adjustment on these numbers? I mean-
Not at this point. We have a pretty solid number that we're content with and feel it's been professionally prepared.
Those are estimates, though, right?
They're, yes, they're projections, you know, based on-
So when they go off the bid, in theory, we might get lucky. They might get lucky, and they might could come in a little bit lower if there's a good competitive process.
Correct.
Okay, so we have numbers in there, but I guess my question was, I'm losing the thought right now. The meeting that's going to be held, is that in the auspices of the Board of Selectmen?
No, it's just a town staff proposal with presentation.
The town administrator, I assume, will be chairing that meeting?
Yes. It's not a public, you know, body, meeting of a public body.
Okay, it's an ad hoc meeting of some sort. So approval at town meeting, is that a simple majority?
I believe it's two-thirds, because it requires borrowing.
Two-thirds.
So if the homeowners are not in favor of it, and, I mean, so then the option is, nothing gets done?
Assuming town meeting doesn't support the article, then yes, nothing gets done.
If the town meeting supports it, for some reason, the developments or those owners of the houses decide not to, then it's pretty much dead, right? They have that option.
I was wondering the same thing.
No, if it's approved by town meeting, it goes forward.
It goes forward, what are they saying?
Yes, we already have, we already have-
I was wondering the same thing, man.
So the town meeting can force the homeowners in a subdivision that's unfinished to finish it?
Sure, I mean, it happens like with sewer betterments, for example, and water main betterments.
Wow, I am taking my phone off the hook.
So the thought would be, town meeting would not likely approve of-
Oh, really?
The borrowing if they thought that the residents were opposed to it.
The town ain't paying for it, they're gonna vote for it.
Well, the town has to pay, has to go on, has to add 2%, I believe, to whatever they purchased.
Up to 2%.
So what would stop the people that live in these subdivisions from coming forward to the planning board with a citizen's petition saying that they want their streets accepted as is?
Can't do that.
Why not?
Then everyone else will be doing that.
There's state law procedures for accepting streets. There's local approvals for accepting streets. So you can't just submit a petition, have a street accepted, and then town meeting would do it.
Couldn't they just ask for waivers to have, for all of them? Nobody else does. We just heard another guy asking for thousands of waivers, right?
No, there's a formal process for accepting roads. As you know, we've been going through that for piazza. And you can circumvent that process.
So if you have, if, okay, so we should, first, we should say that what a lot of people aren't aware of is that these numbers have been published before anybody was told about it. So, right now, I received a phone call last night from a resident of Tobin Farms who was shocked when somebody shared with them a post showing this number, because I caught him off guard. So, my understanding, though, is they can't be charged the betterment unless they've got that 50%. Now that the number's out, if they lose their 50%, how could, how could town meeting force them to pay that betterment? I don't understand how that's possible.
Well, they vote to approve the betterment program, and they have the authority to do that. That's a town meeting vote required. There's nothing that says, you know, subject to the approval of the homeowners.
And who's sponsoring those articles?
Well, according, under the town bylaw, the neighborhood, if they have a majority of the owners that exceed 51% of the frontage, then that's a petition to the selectmen to have their street accepted.
But then is the selectmen, are the selectmen, is the Board of Selectmen sponsoring or backing up the article on the town warrant?
I'm not sure who the actual sponsor is, and I-
The reason I'm asking is because in theory, if the town came, if members of the town came after meeting and said, "Look, we want to pull our proposal off, we don't want this to happen," they could say, "Hey, we're pulling it from the town warrant, couldn't we?"
They just pass it over.
Pass it over, right?
Well, yeah, they could pass over an article. Someone could make a motion, do that, and matter who the sponsor is.
Oh, so there is an out.
That would be, that's what I'm trying to do. That's the last out.
Yeah, there's gotta be an out. I mean, can we just warp into an alternate reality? I specifically remember when we had the meeting, when we had the Tobin's Farm people, Tobin's Farm people here, the residents, at least one person, if not more, asked for clarification on whether or not they could change their mind. Whether or not, if they agree to this, whether or not, after the number came out, could they change their mind? That was my understanding, that we all felt that that was, that was what the deal was.
Well, I can, you know, check that.
If they don't like the quote, they're back out.
Exactly. Otherwise, they wouldn't have gone for it. Who would, who would, who would have rolled the dice and said, "Oh, yeah, whatever. It's a million dollars, no problem."
I think we need to revisit the town bylaw. I think it's- I think we need to, to revisit the town bylaw, I think it's two fifty seven, or two fifty six, two fifty seven or so, for the exact wording on that, because I, I, I think Mr. Retroba's recollection is correct, and I think the residents were of the opinion, when they left here, that there was some way in which they could agree, and some way in which they could withhold agreement.
I think it may have actually come up at selectmen's meeting too, I think it may have also been mentioned there.
Well, it wasn't in the last selectmen's meeting.
Well, the joint meeting that we held with them.
No, no, going back, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, if you guys, I, I, also, as I recall, there was, I'm not particularly fond of the idea, but there were also some consideration given to where we have an as-built situation, we could look at that as opposed to what was required originally, and maybe modify the requirements accordingly with waivers, using that nasty government word.
I, I don't get it, I mean.
It's, it seems that it's gone a little awry, but maybe again, we need to revisit that.
There was talk about half the sidewalks not being built, and there was talk about.
Retention, detention.
Detention basins might not be needed, because, you know, cul-de-sac, well, and not only that, but there's a whole cul-de-sac that wasn't built, the whole subdivision was modified. All of the storm drains and that cul-de-sac were kept off.
Yeah, the unfortunate thing, Mr. Retroba, is I think this has gone past us at this juncture.
Well, you know, these are good questions, we can talk about all the stuff at the public.
Right.
I, I hate to be the one to say I told you so, but I think I brought up it more than one meeting, I kept saying, when do we get to see what the engineer came up with, so we can discuss whether or not any waivers would be granted, and then in the end.
Last minute.
This is what you get.
Mm-hmm.
That sounded.
It's been, you know, it's been a, you know, a time-consuming process.
Right.
It's not like we've just been waiting till the last minute, we've had a lot of work to do on this program, so it's just, it just takes this amount of time.
I'll try and be there on Tuesday night.
So based, based on what you know right now, Bill, do you have the numbers, like, per household?
Yes. So the, um, Tobin Farm at four ninety, uh, and forty homes, I think is twelve five, something like that. The other two are easy, because they're divided by ten. So the, a Misty Meadow at two eighty would be twenty-eight thousand of principal per homeowner, you know.
Twenty-eight thousand per homeowner? You should move to Tobin.
Yeah, plus interest, so it's.
Some of those houses are for sale, by the way.
And then Pastry Hill at one oh five, divided by ten, is ten thousand five hundred per homeowner.
Over twenty years.
Over twenty years, correct.
With interest.
Yes.
The unfortunate thing is, and I don't know how many, you know, how many of us have looked at some of the private roads in Worcester, but that's the, the ultimate, if you will, if nothing is done to these properties. They won't get better of their own, of themselves, unless there's some white knight coming in with a big checkbook, they're gonna get, they're, it's nothing but worse.
Not that I wanna distract us further, but I wanna kinda get back to something that Steve was just mentioning. I think the planning board had good intentions about trying to see these estimates, and trying to find possibilities, and possibly try to get waivers through and everything, we had good intentions, and it kinda looks like it is no longer under our control. And this is kind of the reason that I have doubts or, or concerns when we sit here and approve things under conditions that are no longer in our control. Now, this Stevens Mill is a perfect example, we got a list of conditions, and it's gonna be going to building departments and everybody else, where we have no say in the matter whatsoever, and the solar thing's the same thing, you know, they come here, they get our approval, they go to D E P, and then they kinda make, do what they want, because they make deals. It's, it's all out of our control. And it's, I don't think that's a good way to, to have a board function, is whenever we are asked to make decisions for the good of the applicant, I don't really know who, too early, and then we get railroaded in the end. How many times have we had concerns about us, about, um, wetlands, to find out that the Conservation Commission just rubber stamps everything, and we don't even get a say in the matter or any kind of feedback?
Yep.
So.
So, you know, to, to address the concern though, uh, each of the decisions is reviewed during a pre-construction conference with the applicant, and we go through all the conditions and the decision to make sure that they're being adhered to.
Mr. Raveen in that street is, is a perfect example. He sat in front of us when Bill was on the board, and we talked about how he was going to close up the street, whenever he made his cuts for the utilities into the main road, it was all discussed, it was signed, we all were in agreement, and then he comes back six months later, and nope, that's not what we said. And now we're powerless, because, nope, so.
All right, so they're gonna meet, you said on Tuesday night at five o'clock?
Yes.
And so, we can't go to that meeting, it's just.
Sure. If you're gonna have a quorum, I'll post it as a public meeting.
Does anybody wanna go to the meeting?
I don't know if I'll be able to.
What day is it?
Especially not at five o'clock.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, I got the kids.
Bring him here.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll post the meeting anyway, you know, just in case you get three people that show up.
Tuesday, Tuesday would be, what's the date on next Tuesday?
The seventeenth.
May seventeenth, five P M, it's in this room? It's in this room, Bill?
Yes, it is. Is the chair.
So the, the town meeting, if, I'm, I'm looking at the bylaw now, as I'm reading this, this is two fifty seven dash twenty-one Betterment Assessments. The town meeting is not mentioned specifically in there, I assume the town meeting comes into the play when it, uh, works out to having borrow the money. Okay, because there is no mention of town meeting in terms of, it's just Board of Assessors, if town is authorized, it's at the number of years that the betterment, so on and so forth. And, uh, again, there is no reference to town meeting, other than the fact that there's probably an overriding ordinance that requires that any borrowing be done by a town meeting.
Oh, I was just gonna say that I had already mentioned to Bill that I will, uh, I don't see anything on my schedule right now, it will stop me from attending Tuesday night's meeting, so.
Yep.
We will have at least one representative there, somebody else for the people in L A.
To Mr. Evanson's point, uh, the reference in here, in terms of the authority, is the Board of Selectmen, under section A, Board of Selectmen, under section B, the Board of Selectmen. Further down, under F, Board of Selectmen shall, I mean, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen, uh, the plane was not mentioned in here at all. And again, unfortunately, for better or worse, this betterment process is the only option that is available in the town toolkit, in terms of getting these things approved.
That's why I talked about how, you know, they're not gonna come back to us for waivers, we don't have to grant any waivers. That solves our liability issue, as far as, you know, hey, because we've got a letter from Town Council, it's a whole letter, but it's still a letter from Town Council recommending that we don't waive sidewalks.
Yeah, but some of those waivers would have been common sense.
Right.
Well.
You don't build two more detention basins if you haven't.
It's, there may be, I mean, I'm not trying to state there's been any kind of evil intentions on anybody's part here, it's just with the way the process has gone, and I just, maybe, you know, I personally didn't understand the process correctly, so that's why I'm a little bit perplexed right now. There might be a, a future discussion that we can have, or this board can have with the Board of Selectmen, to kinda see if we can help mitigate some of the, um, concerns of some of these waiver issues.
We don't need again before the twenty-third, do we?
No.
I think one of the things we need to know is, to help us understand this better, and the same thing with the residents, and hopefully this is gonna be part of what's gonna come up Tuesday night, is what are they getting for their four ninety? We don't even know. Is, is four ninety, is four ninety with only half the sidewalks?
Well, the getting the road brought up to subdivision standards.
That doesn't, that doesn't answer my question.
And the decision of the planning board, so whatever the planning board required at the time is what condition you'll get at the end.
So that it's everything? So that it's full sidewalks?
Well, no, except, you know, including the waivers, though.
Half was waived already.
No, all, half of the, half of the sidewalks were only waived, I thought we said in phase one.
Into.
Or the inside perimeter?
Yep.
Oh yeah, that's right, okay, yeah, yeah.
Phase two, phase two happened, happened with the lawsuit.
So then it was, um, so it's kind of those detention basins, right?
Mm-hmm.
That must be where the big money is.
Yep.
Yep.
And when, and when the engineer did his stormwater calculations and everything to figure out what we needed for detention basins there, he took into account the fact, he didn't use the, he didn't use the old plans, did he? Did he use the original plans?
Uh, well, that's the only plan there is.
Well, those are wrong.
What do you mean?
There's a cul-de-sac in Tobin Farms that was not built.
Yes, there was a modification that allowed that by the planning board.
What I'm, what I'm saying is.
The removal of the cul-de-sac was, was, was a plan change.
Right.
It was a plan change.
Yes.
But is he basing his calculations on what we need for detention basins on the fact that, you know, that.
I can't answer that question, but.
Did a little quick math, and believe me, it's not the modern math, uh, the twelve five, twenty years, the six twenty-five a year. I mean, that's not anybody gonna welcome that thought, but it's twelve five.
Hundred and fifty bucks a quarter.
Yeah, I know, that's, and by the time they reach those twenty years, that'll be pocket change, we're in inflation, it was today.
Just imagine how many more debt exclusions we could have to go with that, too.
All right, well, to be continued, so that meeting is at what time on Tuesday?
Five.
Five.
Five o'clock here.
Yes.
Bring your flak jacket.
All right, so we're gonna go back to, um, A and R plans, we have Thunberg Cottage Road. Hello.
How you doing?
Any seat, is that what I do?
Yep, sit down.
Help yourself. Best seats in the house.
Best seat in the house. Hi, Bill, how are you?
Hi, let me just pass.
Sure thing. Everybody's seen it, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I got, I got pulled up.
Thank you.
Should I make a motion?
Or share?
Not just.
As you can see, there's a lot of ink on the paper.
Yeah.
By the time you get the boundaries in, and the contour lines in, and driveways in, and the houses in, there's a lot of ink, so.
Which are you, are you Joe's own, or are you, uh?
Our.
Thunberg, Thunberg.
It's our resident forty-three, I'm, I'm the owner.
Okay.
Applicant, yeah.
Okay. So you own both lots right now?
I do.
So you just wanna change the lot?
I wanna change the lot lines, because I'm proposing addition on number seventeen.
Yeah.
So if you look at number seventeen, there's proposed addition of basically thirty by twelve on the side of the building. So it's short of, it's short of, uh, you need twenty-five feet of side yard in this district, so, um, we're just simply bending that around, or, uh, around the back of the building and the side of the building to maintain that twenty-five feet around the building. So what we're doing is basically take, creating parcel A, which is the one by Hayden Pond, and parcel B, which is up in the, it's up in the wooded area, it's a pretty slope area up at the top of the hill, and we're trading areas. So we're, we're, it's exactly the same area that we're, we're taking from one, giving to another. We don't affect the frontage, we don't affect the lot area, that remains the same. Uh, and we're, so we're just flopping them, so that we can get more use of them, so, you can see the grades, they're, they're pretty tough out there, they're, it's pretty steep, it's all.
The lot lines kinda work better with the grades, if you ask me, the new ones.
Yeah.
Instead of just straightforward, it's kinda meandering with the.
Yeah, meander, meandering by, and, you know, so that was the reason we, we, we're looking to just extend the use of number seventeen and conform to zoning.
So you'll have, you'll have no, uh, nonconformances when this is done?
Well, pre-existing nonconforming would be the area in the frontage, which would remain the same.
Yep.
We're not creating any new nonconformances.
Okay. And the only waiver I saw on the list was you were asking for the waiver on the driveway profiles, but you're not changing the existing driveways, they are what they are.
No, they're the same, and they're, they're shown on the plan, the grades are shown on the plan, so.
All right, somebody wanna make a motion for the A and R plan?
Chair, we approve the A and R plan, Thunberg, comma, Cottage Road, as presented.
With the, with the waiver for the?
With the waiver, yes.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Doesn't get easier than that, thank you, thank you, gentlemen.
Be more difficult for you sitting for twenty minutes, right?
I hear you all, though. Someone had to date it, right?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Have a good night. Thanks so much.
Nobody else. I think you need to have your chair somewhere.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, um, still see Mr. Raveen's not present, so let's go back to our, um, standard business. We did the subdivisions and complete subdivisions, so inspection and actions associated with site plans, so we've got Legacy Landing, Country Club Estates, S E P Solar Oxford Ave, and J D and D on twenty-four Oxford Ave. Do we have anything?
No, I don't have any, any information.
Do you have anything on your planners' plate, Bill?
Uh, two other items, I sent to you the award for the Complete Streets project.
The sidewalks on Mason Road?
Yes, sidewalks on Mason Road.
So those, uh, came in barely under the.
Yes. We had four hundred thousand, it came in at three ninety-six, eight thirty, so.
They might have known that.
So we're very glad of estimating the project. Um, so work should begin, you know, shortly, I don't have an exact date yet, but everything is in order and should, should start soon.
In their estimate, did they give it, uh, like, a time to complete it? Did they say it's a six-month project or a three-month project?
I don't know what the timeframe is.
Okay.
I'm sure it's in the contract.
Okay.
And the other item is, um, as you know, the, the town has been doing online permitting for building permits.
Yep.
For about six months now, and so that's going to be expanded to other departments.
The planning board included?
So the planning board will be included in that, um, so there'll be training of myself, because I, you know, I'm not sure how that's gonna work.
Right.
But it'll be possible for applicants to submit plans digitally, which you pretty much review.
Digitally anyway.
And so it just saves a lot of paperwork.
Right.
So, and then through the system, the plans get routed to different departments, rather than physical copies going to them.
Right.
So it's supposed to minimize paper, make more of a paperless kind of process.
And what kind of program are they using?
I do not.
Uh, 'cause some of them will paint me ass.
But I, uh, you can go online now and apply for building permit.
Yeah.
And soon you'll be able to do an A and R, and a subdivision, and, and everything that we do. So Bill, just to let you know, I don't have an exact time for it yet, it might be a couple of months, but it's, it's in the works.
It's so much easier, because building inspectors just email me five minutes later.
Right.
Speaking of that, um, a question I had, I had thought of, um, I saw that there was some comments in the newspaper about, um, the town of Dudley was looking into the prices of their building permits, they actually had somebody from Nicholas College doing that.
They changed them.
Did they change it?
They changed them, a, a goodly number of them, this was at several, that may be three Board of Selectmen meeting in battle.
Yeah, I thought that was way back now.
But they did cha, they increased them?
They, I don't know that there were any decreases, everything that I was witness to was an increase.
Okay, um, the thing that I was thinking.
We need to look at our fees at some point, too.
I was gonna say, we need to, because I don't think, I can't remember the last time we changed our fees, it's gotta be over ten years.
Right.
So I mean, like a site plan, you know, major, minor site plan should be looked at and see what the cur, you know, what the current going rate is for the surrounding towns.
Correct.
Um, subdivision, you know, submissions, things like that, because, like I said, I can't remember that we've had a change in the last ten years, so it's probably been more than that. But, um.
That was the comparison, Mr. Chairman, that was made, was, uh, towns in the area.
Right.
I forget which ones in particular, but I think Charlton and Oxford were part of that, and, uh, Webster as well.
Wasn't there, like, one permit that they left alone? Was it like commercial plumbing or something? I thought there was something.
It seemed that everything was going up.
Yeah, for the most part, you're right.
Yeah. So, uh, maybe that'll help with the tax rate.
Yeah, so we should, we, we might wanna, um, we might wanna let them know, maybe, I don't know if that person that was doing the, the study for the building permits from, uh, Nichols College, if they could also look into.
Huh?
I mean, the same towns.
Mm-hmm.
And see what the, uh, going rates are for, you know, planning board things, you know, 'cause like I know even A and, A and R plans, I mean, we haven't, we haven't changed that, it's still a hundred dollars per lot, right?
Right.
Yeah, we might wanna look at that.
That doesn't require approval at town meeting, we can just raise the fees?
It's, uh.
It's actually like a regulation, so you need to have a public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So we might wanna ask them if that's, if that resource is still available.
Okay.
Or if we have somebody, um.
The young lady in question was in attendance at the last board of selectmen's meeting. I don't know what her availability might be, though.
Is that Olivia?
Yes.
Yes.
Nicholas College graduated last week, whole last weekend, so.
Okay.
Might be out of luck.
Yeah, so Olivia Anderson's been a very useful intern, that, the town administrators, she was on quite a number of projects, so.
Yeah, okay. But if, if we know what towns they looked at for, um, the building permits, we could, we could just get a copy of that, so we can look at the same towns for the, for the planning board permits, and then we could, you know, I, I could even call around and ask what they are and just.
Yeah.
I mean, some of the, half of the stuff's probably online anyways, so we can just, we can just look it up and make a spreadsheet and see where we fall. My guess is we're probably at the bottom of the list again.
Speaking of which, where is our gal Friday tonight?
Two?
Yeah.
Uh, Hawaii.
Really?
Or, or on her way.
I'd make a motion that any further meetings be held wherever the, the.
She gets a much bigger.
For this attendee might be.
She gets a much bigger stipend than we do, I guess.
Some fees have already gone up, Mr. Chairman.
So anyways, okay, um, was that all you had on your plans, Bill?
Yes, yeah.
Any comments for the planning board?
Uh, C of R P C Annual Meeting will be June ninth in Sturbridge.
Okay. Anything else?
I think the audience probably has little to say this evening.
No comments. So, uh, under other bu, business, we have listed here our next, uh, set the next meeting dates. So May twenty-third, that's, is that a Monday?
Mm-hmm.
That's the Monday before town meeting, so it's really a, a meeting to act on the, uh, written recommendations that I'll prepare for you to read to town meeting.
Okay.
And, and to, you know, talk about how you wanna handle the articles as they come up. So it's just a sort of a preparation session for town meeting.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's the meeting that we have in the cafeteria before town meeting, yeah, otherwise.
Yes. So it's usually not televised, it's not televised, because, you know.
Yeah.
It's a busy, busy cafeteria.
And then May twenty-fifth, we need to see, um, if that one needs to have, go forward or not, if you have all the details on Stevens Mill. And we wanna come in and sign that stuff off and take care of that on the twenty-fifth weekend, otherwise, the next meeting after that would be pushed out to when, June?
To June.
And is that before the election or after the election?
Before.
All right, so we could, if we don't get it done on May twenty-fifth, we still have one meeting before the election.
I, I think it's, let me just check to be sure.
Mr. Chairman, what day do we usually meet?
June eighth. It's gonna be that good meeting.
Yes, that's right.
At the school?
Yeah.
Uh, the town meeting usually at seven PM and we usually meet at six thirty, right?
Six thirty, correct.
Okay.
Right, so we're meeting then, two days later, on Wednesday the twenty-fifth, if you want, and then the one after that is June eighth.
And I'll be out of town on the eighth, I will not be here.
The town election, is that the sixth?
No, the thirteenth.
Fifteenth.
Oh, no. The, the election?
Yeah.
Is, is the thirteenth of June.
Thirteenth of June.
Yes.
So we are gonna meet on the twenty-fifth, correct?
Right.
Right now, we have, we have it scheduled, so.
Twenty-fifth at five o'clock, right?
Um, no, we were gonna do, we were gonna do normal time on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third is at six thirty.
That's a short meeting.
Twenty-fifth would be, twenty-fifth would be at seven PM, our normal time.
Got it.
That's when it's, that's when it's written down. All right, um.
And then the other one was June eighth, right?
Yep. And Mr. Edison's gonna be out of town for that one, so.
Correct.
Uh, approvals of, uh, consultant vouchers, payments of bills, do we just have that one?
Yes, and I have another one too for you, won't you?
You have another one?
Do that one, right.
On the newspaper.
All right, so the one that we have is from Film Bridge Press, it's for a total of six hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty cents. So what would you have, Bill?
Excuse me?
What's, what's the limit you have?
Uh, this is, uh, and actually, it's an older one from, Tom, can you pass us that? From Graves for the Fish Road project, and I thought we had paid it.
Okay.
Well, this invoice came in, um, just a few days ago, so I guess.
All right, so we have an outstanding.
I'm not sure what happened, so I'd like.
We have an outstanding invoice, uh, for the Fish Road subdivision, uh, for fifteen hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So would you like to make a motion that we pay these two vouchers?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we pay the vouchers for both Stonebridge Press and for Graves Engineering.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In unanimous? Okay. And Bill, we did vote that you could sign off, uh, most of us.
Yes.
Take care of the vouchers, and are there, are there any other town notices that we need to know about?
No.
Is there some sort of a security upgrade at some point they're gonna impose or run on board?
I believe so. I, I don't have any of the details, but I did hear that.
Okay.
I, I had talked to, um, Tom Raveen the other day, he had to go to a wake this evening and.
Okay.
Thought it'd be out, he'd be out of there by eight o'clock, but, oh, he, it must have been hard for him to get away, so, so that's why he's not here then, I guess.
He was looking for an extension of his subdivision?
Yes.
Um, is that gonna be, is that gonna be out of date if we were to work on it on the?
No, it's June twenty-sixth.
It's due when?
June twenty-sixth.
Okay, so we got time to deal with it.
We have enough time to do that, yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, one, before we grant that extension, uh, would it be in order to have Graves take another look at the project, in order to assess where we were? Now that we've reached a, a milestone, if you will, in terms of a, a point of extension?
Yeah, I'm not sure if they've done any more work on the, on the subdivision streets, they've been, you know, building the lots out.
Uh-huh. I'm just curious as to what, uh, another, you know, set of eyes might, uh.
I can ask him to.
You know, it.
Yeah.
Just, it gives us a, an opportunity to maybe take another look, I think, that.
Has he been released on all the lots, Bill, do you know of yet?
Yes, yes, they're out, all the lots are released.
All, all of them are released, too.
And I took a ride down there, and I would say half of them are at le, at least half of them are built, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't been down in a while.
But, um, yeah, I mean, it might be, be hooves if, um, Graves could take a quick look to make sure that.
Uh-huh.
Everything.
Sure, sediment basins tend to fill up with, you know, a lot of construction activity, so.
Doesn't Graves do u, regular site visits anyway?
He do.
Yeah, if their, if their last site visit wasn't too long ago, which I don't think it was, is that sufficient, or do we still want? Yeah, I thought there was something with dirt on the road and snow, if you get some of that.
Right, I mean, if, if it was within a la, if it was in a month, a month or two.
It was not, not that long ago.
That would, that would be fine.
That's one month ago.
If it's, if it's more than three months, I think we should, um, go back and take a look.
Maybe six weeks, something like that.
Yeah, okay.
Good. Oh, here we go.
Thank you.
Oh. We thought we were getting out early.
Just made it, uh, we were.
We were getting happy.
It's just, thank you for waiting.
I, uh, assumed you were like, till about nine with the public hearing, so.
That's what I thought it would be, right.
Guess it went well or went quick?
It went quick.
That's good. The, um. Welcome, everybody, I'm Tom Raveen, if you don't mind me. Bill, I brought the, uh, extension for, for that, too. So I don't know what the agenda is.
Can we take that item out of order first? It's something that should be easy. The extension?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, the extension is for how long, huh?
One year.
One year.
Okay.
So the expiration date would be June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
Can we ask you, um, where are you right now as to, uh, how many lots are sold?
Everything sold, the whole project.
Wow. Everything sold.
Yeah, everything is sold. Uh, we're actually closing on the remaining three or four lots to build very shortly, so everything will be transferred. I think we have one just backed up, but we have, it's on deposit already on lot nineteen, but that's, that's, we're just working out the details on that now.
When will your first family move in?
They've already have.
You've got a family living there?
Yep, yep, and the second will be in in about two weeks. And the third will be two weeks after that, and every, about every two weeks, we've got the first eight houses probably going into completion. So now we're, we've got ten more, uh, everything at the end of the cul-de-sac is sold, and we've already hydro seeded, we've already loomed and seeded and got everything done. I know we had some, um, you know, we've been, a lot of construction going on, so we've been sweeping the roads lately, making sure everything's clean, we brought loom down. From our top, we've loomed and seeded the lot eight, which is the second one to the end. Um, and we've got most of them all graded out, and we're, we're kinda getting it all. So all the soil at the end of the subdivision, everything is stabilized and ready, you know, ready for, so when they do move in, you know, throughout the summer, the grass and everything is growing throughout the, uh, throughout the summer. And then we're gonna build the, the remaining ten, kind of, pretty much all at once, and our goal is to get those ten built and proceed. We've already started graveling the sidewalks, the whole left side, getting all prepped. So we get the berms in, we get everything done this summer. We're basically a year ahead of schedule, kinda the way it looks, 'cause we, we figured it was a three-year project. Um, and we're, fortunately, the way the economy was, everything sold quickly, so we'd like to get the project completed. Once everyone's moved in, then we'd like to get all the berms in, done, top coat, I, you know, I, I spoke with Bill about this a little bit. Whether we can get it completely done by this fall for one of the meetings, I don't wanna rush it, and I don't wanna be pressured to get it done. I think we're, I'd rather get all the homes in and build, everything graded correctly, everything done right, and probably look for more of a fall, like, completion of acceptance of the roads. So we're probably asking for a year extension and have it completed within, you know, six months.
We would only accept in spring, isn't that the?
Right.
Of course, so.
Yeah.
We would be accepting of.
Yeah, you, the, there's an amendment on the warrant to also allow road, street acceptances at the fall town meeting.
At the fall town meeting, yeah.
But we, we wouldn't be asking you to bring it to acceptance then. We wouldn't be ready for the as-built.
I don't wanna rush it for the fall, honestly, I know, I, I think I'd be trying to, you know, push it to get everything completed to the, to the, um, standards of the board. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, yes, we can do that, and then not be able to fulfill our obligation.
Well, if that doesn't pass the town meeting, we'd be into the spring anyway.
Yeah, so I think if we get everything done and, and kinda shoot the town meeting for acceptance of the road, I think that would probably work in, in all of our favor.
So you may be back for another extension.
No, 'cause, no, 'cause we're talking the spring, we're only doing a one-year extension right now.
So spring, get tw- two thousand twenty-three.
When, when is the town meeting in the spring?
Yeah, it would be before the twenty-sixth, I think, of the month, or earlier in.
Third, I think it's the third Monday of May, something like that.
Yeah.
So it would be looking to book on the town meeting, and, you know, if we need an extension for a couple of weeks, it'd probably be at that point done.
This probably should close the book, really, if we go to the, the end of June, it's.
Yeah, theoretically, it could be wrapped up.
Should be, yeah, could be.
Yeah, we'd, we'd like to wrap it up sooner than later, to be honest with you.
Okay.
That's our goal.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Okay.
That we grant an extension of one year till June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three for the Lyons Estates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, do you have this?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain from that vote, and the next issue will clarify that.
Okay, so we have one extension with Mr. Petrover and four yes.
I'll leave this here, Bill. This, this is the sheet, I filled it out for you, so, or signed it, so you can, uh, if you just give me a copy, I'll pick up a copy of that at the town hall when you're, ever sent, thank you.
You have to sign anything on that, Bill, no?
No.
Okay. All right, so the other item we had for you on the agenda was pre-application meeting on a concept plan for subdivision on Sommel Road.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to refuse my song from the following discussion.
Okay.
This, basically, this is a. Oh, you got it up on screen, oh, great, okay, awesome, thank you. Um, this is a project that we're looking at to, uh, to move forward on, um, and that was drawn by, uh, I believe Para, Lance Reyes did all this work, uh. A few years back, and it kinda has gone a little bit through the town, through different departments of the town. I know there's been a lot of board changes since, since this was originally introduced to the town. We're sold out where we're at, we, we brought, our, our, our home values are, are very, uh, good, which is great for the town. Um, and another great thing about what we've done is a lot of the, a lot of the people are second-time buyers from me. Um, where there's no kids coming into the town, that, that the price range we're selling them at is, um, is a good range, tax-based for the town. So we're looking to keep that same concept and move forward into another project, 'cause we have a waiting list for, for, um, uh, Lyons Estates right now. Have people that wanna, would like to move into the town, which is a great thing. So we're looking to move forward with a small, you know, smaller project on this level. And this, this was presented to me, where there's an eight-lot subdivision, um, that we're interested in, or I'm interested in, and, and trying to develop this, and, and. It was preliminarily developed by Para as what it potentially could be, so I just wanted to kinda come into the town before we, you know, get everything really. To the point of purchase and sales and moving forward, I just kinda wanted to talk to the board about what your thoughts and what your opinions are, what you'd be looking for. You know, we're, we're in the middle of doing a, a, a great subdivision now. Um, I don't know if you, you guys have had the chance to go through there, but it's progressing, uh, very well, and this, the, the homes that we're building are, are very nice. We've got a great response to the, um, project, so we're, we'd like to do the same thing and duplicate the same kind of price structure, house, um, size. Same value of houses that we're selling on a new project, and we'd like to see if this, if this is possible on this parcel, to get this design here. Or something relative to what this design is that Para did a few years back to make it work.
How long, a few years?
I think it was back in oh, what was it?
Say it on there?
I think it was oh, five or something like that, or no, oh, six, yeah, January twenty-sixth, oh, six.
Six?
Yeah.
That's sixteen years back.
Yeah.
There may have, things, some things may have changed.
Correct. I sent all the information to my current engineer, they're going through the whole process of doing everything right now to look at the zoning. He doesn't believe any, like, there's been no real zoning changes as far as that's concerned, as far as, like, frontage and everything else.
Still lot size?
There, I think there's a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet on these. These aren't just fifteen thousand, these are a little bit bigger.
And it's town water or town sewer?
Yes, it's a town sewer, town well, just like we're doing the project that we're doing now.
Has this been brought before board before?
This has, it's presented in front of a few town boards, uh, like the sewer department, just to get some review of what they thought.
I just wanted to clarify.
No, I'm not saying, some of the things I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, so maybe I'll just sit down?
Yeah, go ahead.
So.
This is kind of an informal meeting to just see where we're at, just to let the board know. This, I didn't, we didn't have a preliminary plan drawn and submitted, I just wanted to come in and talk to the board. You know, about what we have presented, you know, Steve does know a lot more information about it than.
So this property is owned by Sommel Realty, uh, Sommel Road LLC, I'm the manager of the LLC, and I, this is actually from our, our family, so I know this property really well. I just wanted to clarify, um, we're looking at town sewer, uh, on Lawrence Road right there. There's a gravity line there that we would wanna tie into for that development, but there's no town water there, so we'd be looking at, uh, private wells. Which is actually, I live on Lawrence Road, and that's how we do it there. We've got a, it's kind of a weird situation, I have a private well, but I have a water meter, because that's how they know how much to charge me for my town sewer. So that's what we'd be looking to do on those lots there. Um, wha, wha, what I'm proposing to do is an A and R and convey that section with the eight lots to the right. To Mr. Raveen for him to, to, uh, do the subdivision, so this plan back in two thousand. this plan back in two thousand and five also shows the remainder of the property being subdivided up into three additional lots. I'm not looking to do that at this time, 'cause we're changing our plans as far as the original house and barn that's showing there on the, on the map on the plan, so, just to give you an idea, we're talking about we're talking about from here over is what, what we're looking at right now. This would be, something else would happen in the future that would, would originally, originally it was planned that this was gonna be cut out to keep the house and the barn on its own forest, and we're gonna have two, uh, like, flag-shaped lots. The frontage is adequate here, not that it matters, 'cause like I said, that's down the road, same here. This is rez fifteen, zoning hasn't changed, it's a minimum hundred-foot frontage required for those lots. Uh, all of those lots end up being more than the fifteen thousand square feet, just because of the way it broke, broke out. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention, which is kinda, I'm not quite sure why Mr. Pero, he did the engineering on this, did it this way, but for some reason, he left this little piece right here uncompared, but I'm sure Tom's engineer would probably recommend that that be split between these two lots or something.
Right, probably an access for the land.
For future use and with the.
Jason property. Yeah, I think that's what he was thinking, I think.
Steve, wasn't there land behind there at the time?
There, there still is.
Uh, yeah, so it was probably adjacent for access.
But. No, yeah, for future connection. If anybody knew the history of that property, this gentleman's house is, it's here on the water, this is the pond. It's here on the water, and he's got a huge driveway that goes up all the way around, comes all the way around the Sawmill Road. I can't imagine that he would wanna, you know, he's had that privacy all of these years, I can't imagine that he would wanna develop that back there.
We can block that off anyway, just put it, like, like Steve said, put it either adjacent to this one or another one, and then, then there's no access to that anyway.
The full topography on this property was already done, as you can see, the topography lines are in there, of course, topography doesn't change over, you know, over a million years it might change, but not over.
Little wetlands?
What's that?
Any wetlands on that, no?
No, actually, the wetlands are on the left-hand side there, when we had it flagged for wetlands back in, uh, two thousand and five.
That little pond on the corner?
Yeah, we actually lucked out, because this property land right here. This area right here, what you're looking at right here, this is the gravel, uh, pathway or road, for lack of a better term, that the town of Dudley actually put in to access the dam up here on Sawmill Pond, this is the dam, and they needed to get here to do repairs, so they actually put this in. So, when they flagged it, my engineer said they're just gonna use the wetland delineation line that, uh, the town engineer used. They flagged it for that, so, definitely, these lots we've broken a conservation. But, the only thing he found over here, there was a wet area up in the back here, but he classified that as a, uh, I wanna say it, or isolated pocket of I forgot what he called it.
Not classified as a wetland.
Right, yeah.
So, it would be your intent, maybe, at a follow-up, well, well, probably not the twenty-third, but at a subsequent meeting to present a preliminary plan, and then a definitive plan, and then go forward with it?
Yeah, we, we, I, I think.
It sounds like this is just kind of, uh, ballparking the whole idea at this point. Well, we're trying to put it together, and what I think the best way to do it is to communicate with the board.
Right, understand.
You know, I wanna come in before we.
But there is, there is a process.
Right, exactly, so, this was already drawn up, this was, you know, already done, and it's been in kind of existence, and it kinda looks like it worked, so what I wanted to do is is come in and just talk to the board, to your opinion is, what do you think, what are your thoughts? Um, what do you look, what, you know, a, a small project like this, it's a simple, easy project, um, compared to what we've done, you know, we've, you know, we're doing you know, twenty lots now in town, and a double the size road, um, we'd like to move forward, and we'd like working within the town, it's and we'd like to just put this together, and, and we just wanted your opinion on what your thoughts are, where, where would you go, or what you'd be looking for, if we do put, when we do put up a preliminary plan.
Yeah, I mean, just.
I, I, again, I, I could submit that there is a process, and I, I, I don't, I don't think anybody here, I, I wanna speak for everyone, but I don't think anybody, from what you've said, or what you've mentioned, I don't think anyone has any questions, but it, it is a little short in terms of the details, and there is the process to be
Right.
you know, worked out. Like I said, I, you know, I've been through this process several times.
Right.
On small subdivisions, large subdivisions, in multiple towns.
You've become a familiar face.
And I, and I find, not just in, not just in this town, but I've worked in a lot of towns, and I find, like, you know, instead of coming in and saying, okay, guys, here's the plan.
Yeah.
You know, and you, you have an opinion on this, you might have an opinion on this, like, everyone wants it, like, so what I'm trying to do is in- introduct- interject your opinions to say, what do you think, like, do you think this is gonna work, can we put this together, you know, does it look like a good project for the town?
Tom, have, have you thought about an open space development for that property?
It's too small, to be honest with you, because it's already fifteen thousand square foot lots, and if you do an open space, it's only eight lots. Uh, to make this project work, we need eight lots, you know, and that's why I wanted to come in, you know, it doesn't work on seven, it doesn't work on six, it does, it needs to to make this project work, 'cause it's, it's not a thirty-lot subdivision where we have some open space, or, you know, whatever, even twenty lots is tight, as, as you guys know. You know, the, the cost of land today is the cost of infrastructure to put in, right now with inflation, it's, it's absolutely ridiculous to make things work. So, we're just trying, you know, numbers are important, lot, uh, and the amount of lots is important to me as a developer. What it's gonna cost for roadwork to get it done, to make the values, we know what the values are, we're, our lot values right now are a hundred thousand dollars a lot, that we're selling them for in, in Truman Drive, and, you know, we're trying to stick to those numbers, because that works, we've sold out a project, and all the homes in our project are five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars, which is a great tax base.
If you looked at this in terms of a fifty-five and over, similar to what's happening, uh, off of Bayport Road, I mean, we've, uh, I think we got twenty-one waivers that we put on the books for that one.
Yeah.
Uh, the, I don't know how many units you could squeeze into this.
I have, honestly, I know Jimmy does a lot of the fifty-five and overs, I know, I've known Jimmy for years, and, um, I'm not a fifty-five and older development, that's not my forte.
Okay.
Uh, we do, we're single, I've been a single-family home builder for thirty-five years, um, and we, we like to keep it simple, we like to keep it true to form, and I a- and that's just what I do, it's the way, it's where we do it, we try to keep it affordable and keep people looking, moving into the town, eh, 'cause it's a great town. People, we're, we're finding the interest is amazing what we have for this town, and you can see it by our project, so we'd like to, that's why we're looking to grow more in this town as a developer, and make it work, um, and bring people into the town at the value that we're bringing, bringing them in.
How, how long does the cul-de-sac work out to be?
About, it's, I think it's a seven hundred, uh, six hundred or seven hundred.
No, it's about four hundred.
Four hundred, yeah, this one, oh, I'm looking at the yellow one, this one's four hundred feet, uh, so it's under the, the law, the bylaws of where we're at. Which I believe is six hundred.
So, I mean, you, you said you've already given it to your engineer, have him just draw up a preliminary plan and submit it.
Before we go forward now, I just wanted to talk to the board, before we start spending.
Tom, what's, what's your stormwater plan, or Steve, do you know, for this property?
I don't know, I, right now, we don't have a stormwater plan, 'cause this is the only plan I've had, that I've got, I, I've, I've talked before we invest, I, I, you know, I, I just feel like it was important to talk to the board.
I understand, I just, just wondering if you.
You have clear access coming off that road?
Yeah, we do.
So, you have no problem.
Yeah, and the sewer line's directly across the street, it's a gravity feed system for the whole system. Um, I know, you know, Para does have a lot of the things still around, you know, if we can get a hold of Len to get some of the, some of the, um.
I think he's around anymore.
He's, he's retired, he's retired, he still has his files somewhere tucked away. Um, you know, I mean, we've gotta look at various, you know, drainage issues, and how it's gonna work for runoff and all that other stuff, all that stuff comes in the prelimi- the preliminary plan. Right now, we're just, I just wanted your opinion on the board, what do you think of a, another small project like this, if it looks like something, um, you know, that the board would be, a- as long as we meet all the requirements, you know, d- does the board see any future issues, is what I'm looking at.
So, can I just say a couple words? Sure, first of all, my opinion doesn't mean anything, 'cause I'm not on the board, whenever you're gonna go with this, so. Take it for the great assault, I personally, as a personal per- person, and, and against something like this, I think that it destroys the whole nature of what's, what's out there in, in, uh, the area.
Okay.
Um, but, as a member of the board, that doesn't count for beans, what counts is if, you know, you, you have the right to do this.
Right.
And it all depends on the waivers, and, um, I see already the waivers being, um, no open space, uh, sidewalks, or no, probably no sidewalks, the sidewalks are only one side, so that would be an issue that the board would probably go, have to tackle, um.
We have them for sidewalks.
Looks like you have enough room, I mean, the, the cul-de-sac, that that's a police chief slash fire chief thing, but the sidewalks are gonna be the big issue, 'cause we fight with every subdivision, and I'm sure there are no subdivisions, uh, no, uh, sidewalks on Sawmill, and I'm sure that this project probably wouldn't want to put any in, it's, wouldn't matter for the eight houses. So, that was one thing that probably would help you, to the board, to count, to give some kind of a comment, is, you guys, you guys favorable to waiving them or not?
Sidewalks, school buses can't go down dead-end roads, that's why.
Oh, school bus, nothing's going down that road.
Uh-huh.
Nothing's going down that road.
Yeah, that's why I have to.
Trash truck won't even go.
That's why I have to put the sidewalks in. Well, I mean, it's gotta be, the cul-de-sac's gotta be engineered and designed for fire trucks, school buses, all that, you can't, it's not, we're, we're past that point of days where you just put a dead-end road and.
Right, but school bus won't drive down it, because half the school bus drivers can't drive.
That's not.
That's not your problem.
That's not my problem.
Well, they're not allowed.
Develop real estate, I don't base it on whether a guy, somebody can drive a school bus or not, we have to make sure that a school bus can't turn around, that a fire truck for safety reasons. I agree with, like, the sidewalks, you know.
Yeah.
You know, we're not trying to eliminate, we're not looking for waivers right now on anything, we're, you know, I, I, they're, they're all, everything I've ever built, you know, the three hundred homes, is mostly neighborhoods. We've put sidewalks in, they're family homes, so families move into these, yes, we have people, it's, honestly, and, and right now on Truman Drive, it's about fifty-fifty. We have a lot of retired couples that are buying in there, selling their big homes and buying ranch homes, which is, which is a nice feature, it's, you know, it's great for, there's no kids in the school, it's a great um, so it doesn't impact the town, like, a lot of people say, oh, another subdivision, now this, now it's gonna impact us tremendously, we have couples that are moving in there, just retired couples.
From what I understand, the schools are looking for, for students.
Are they?
Yes.
Now, that's so different than it was.
Numbers, numbers are down, I mean, the presentation is before the board is selected, on a couple of occasions, the numbers are down significantly, they, they want students.
It's different than it used to be, 'cause that was always an impact after developing for thirty years.
I just wanna point out, there's two hundred and fifty feet of frontage there.
What does that mean?
It means you got a hundred feet for each one of those lots to the left and the right of the road, and you got fifty feet for the road.
Right.
But those lots, those, if those houses face the cul-de-sac, you know, the, the, the side yard doesn't really matter.
Yeah, that'll be your road branch.
The frontage would be, the frontage would be on the new road, not on the old road.
No, my point being is that it's fifty feet wide, might not need to waive any, might not.
What, what, all I would, all I would say to you is, y- your engineer's gonna, gonna know what our rules and regulations are. If he can come up with a preliminary plan that meets all the rules and regulations, we can't deny it.
Right, so, well, my, what my point is, is, what, your opinion is perfect, okay, this is what I want, and I wanna hear this, 'cause
Right, that's why I brought it up.
Was it for you, sidewalks, sidewalks, school buses, so, so when I go to my engineer, I can say, look, here's what the board's gonna be looking for. So, if I bring in a plan that has no sidewalks, a cul-de-sac that can't turn a truck around, you guys are gonna say, no, this is no good, I'm gonna go back to the drawing board. I wanna come in here with a plan and not waste anybody's time, honestly.
Then just tick off all the boxes on the rules and regulations, and we can't deny it.
Well, that's what we try to do anyway.
Right.
We try to make them all work, I don't like, you know, coming in here and asking for, you know, a, a release on this, and this, and that, and change this, I don't want, I'm not looking for that, I want, I wanted the board's opinion on what you, what you think um, and to make it work, I mean, we wanna make this work, we, we, we probably have this about half sold out already for our waiting list, 'cause people like the town so much, and what we're doing, and our projects, you know, so, that's not, it's not important to the board, but it's, it's nice to have people that are desiring the town, because obviously, something's going right in the town. You know, I mean, we just wanna make sure when we draw the plan, we've got everything that you guys would want, and, you know, I just wanted to feel like if you think, if we present this to you guys, you know, like that, like the sidewalks.
Again, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think we're kind of repeating ourselves a bit.
Yeah, no, I agree.
I think you need to, to bring in a preliminary plan, obviously, you've got a couple of thoughts from us at this point, but they are pre-preliminary, you will. So, uh, continue with the process, I'm in with the preliminary plan, we'll have something to look at.
Perfect.
We can continue the discussion, I don't think there's anyone here that is, uh.
Kind of deny it, I mean, if you're, like I said, if you check all the boxes, we can't deny it.
No, I just wanted to present it to you guys for a pe-.
Appreciate that.
Just 'cause we work, you know, we're working in town with you guys, I'd rather start from scratch and say, let you know where we're at.
Alright.
So, okay, that's where I, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks for waiting around.
If we continue. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, and we adjourn.
We have a motion?
I have a second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, unanimous? Steve, you voted on that?
Aye.
Yeah. Okay.